It being 6:35. Planning Board hearing for February 6th, 2020. The agenda includes a 6:30 PM appointment for 241 Franklin Street consolidation plan, as well as secretarial items and meeting minutes for review and approval, as well as correspondence, including emails, mail emails and notices, as well as public hearings and information from our budding towns. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Being 6:30. Don't see anybody here for the appointment for 241 Franklin Street. We can just hop right over to the bills for Amory Engineers. We want for Hill to Lane at 8:58. I recall seeing some sort of an email regarding this. Did anybody else see that one as well?
I did not.
I think that we left it that Gordon was gonna call them again, right?
Because they had the invoice for work that didn't really make sense.
Yeah, there was no water, right?
Correct.
Just to catch up to speed on the interesting stuff about this. So, someone had submitted a plan for approval and we sent it out to a review engineer for them to look at it. In this particular case, we asked the review engineer to take a look to see what the cost to finish the road was or to do the road. When they came back with their estimate, it included things that weren't in the proposal. So, we have the bill to pay and we've been hesitant to pay it because we'd like to see the accurate information first. So, we've been putting this aside for the last couple of weeks to figure out whether or not we should pay them because what they gave us, we can't really use. So, we're trying to get some more useful information before we pay them.
So, it's well water in the street and they did it for town water. What else? Was there any other discrepancies on that?
There's a big volume analysis too, right? So, they identified a whole lot of fill to be brought in for the site, which I think was possibly accurate, but we weren't really sure how accurate it was because they were including other things that just flat out didn't exist as part of the project. So, that made us question how accurate any of it was. So, we kicked it back to them to take another look at it and see if they would fix it. So...
And we don't know if they've gotten back to us about fixing it?
We don't know yet, but I vaguely remember seeing something with their name on it. So, I was just gonna check my emails here. And if I... All of us would have seen that. Yes, February 3rd, there was an email. I'm reading it into the record because I don't see it in our correspondence. Tuesday, January 28th, Pat Brennan from Amory Engineers wrote back to Joanne. "I've been asked why town water was included in our estimate for the construction of Hill to Lane. This was an oversight on my part. Most all subdivisions we review are serviced by town water. My apologies to the board and the developer for the oversight. Attached is a revised estimate without any of the water up permanence is included." So, looks like we have a revised estimate included. Unfortunately, looking at it on my phone might not be the best way to do it. I imagine you all have it in your inboxes as well. I think once Joanne is able to return...
Just make sure this isn't it, you know what I mean?
It's a spring.
Okay.
They might... Is it possibly in Gordon's package?
I'm looking. So, this is everything that we have that's attached to the bill. Improved. I believe this is the original December 2nd estimate.
I'm looking at one dated January 28th. The new total is $1,481,485. But that's just their bill, right? Not the actual calculation?
Yeah, and well, this is the correspondence back and forth. So, this is that email from Pat Brennan. But I do not see the attachment.
So, that seems like it's almost the same number that we had from before. Am I wrong?
1.6, I believe.
Okay, so it's a little less.
Yeah, but pretty close.
So, before it was 1,638,230. So, $1,638,230 and now it's $1,481,485 of the line items that changed. 150 anyway. Yes, with gravel fill, still $500,000 of that. 15,000 cubic yards, that's a lot.
Yeah, it looked like he tried to confirm it because here he does make a mention that the fill accounts for almost 40% of the cost.
Yeah, so the water main was 108,000. Some hydrants and valve boxes were about another 15,000. So...
Now, can we... This is just a question about can we actually build a new subdivision without hydrants? Is that okay now? You know what I mean?
I think as long as the fire department has reviewed it, I don't know that we would in the future. I don't remember the circumstances on how this one came about. I think this one might have been before my time as well.
It was '05.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I agree that it's odd that you would be able to build a subdivision and not have hydrants and not have the homes have fire protection of any kind.
Yeah, I can only assume it was based off of the length from one and/or the amount of houses. Maybe because it was only four houses.
Right.
Well, in technicality, we now have two quotes. So, if they did wanna turn around now that Haywood Street does have water and at it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, they know what the cost would be.
So, at least now we have both the costs, like as far as they redid it. And I would say that we'd probably be ready to pay, in my opinion. You guys?
I think so. I'm kinda curious if they add it to their previous invoice for fixing that.
Oh, right.
Well, I'm only gonna make a motion to pay this one.
It was 858. It was 858.
I'm willing to make a motion to pay that one.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, December 2nd, 2019. Let us go ahead and sign this. I'm gonna see one copy.
I think we usually...
The bill, I believe, is just... That is a lot of paper just for one invoice. Where are you going? Okay. The next invoice is for...
WB Mason.
2873.
Make a motion to pay a bill to WB Mason, invoice number 206765055 in the amount of $28.73 for office supplies.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in there?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have, as far as the meeting minutes go? Do we have the people here that need to be signed off on this?
Not for 9:5.
Okay, we do have changes that were made to the November 21st. And so, we can sign these. I don't know if you guys remember or if you wanna read them.
Those are your handwritten ones that you gave to Joanne?
Yeah, I just wanna review real quick.
Yeah, certainly.
And then the other ones, 12-2.
Yep. Yep, approve after changes. So, I think we've made motions on both of these.
Oh, did we do that last time around? And now we just have to sign off on it?
Yep. I'm not sure if there were things other than the note of Gordon recusing himself, but that does look like it's been addressed. It was a pretty unidentable first hearing to be part of.
It's okay. We'll ease into it.
Ah, it gets way worse. So, Gordon's usually the chairman, so he would usually run the meeting. But because he's not here, it kinda defaults to me. And I don't know what happens there if both Gordon and I are not here.
I think I'm third.
You're third place?
Yep.
And then it doesn't matter after that because we wouldn't have quorum, right?
Yep. Good point. Well, welcome. I don't know that we have any information even as early as the 241 Franklin Street.
Right here.
Plan. Have you got something yet?
All this was on the table, but I just noticed that that's what it says.
So, let's obviously not do anything on that since they're not here. But what do we... Oh yeah, let's take a look. Looks like some sort of a solar plan. Was this the one where they were trying to essentially get the lots separated out and have access? So, this project is a solar plan that was included in... Have they recorded something?
Right, what I believe is that they're trying to... Remember, they've been dealing with two different laws.
Yeah.
They wanted to make that again one law. They want to unsubdivide, so to speak. I think consolidate is the word that's been used. And I think quite one of the questions that they already... I think it was Trey Questle came correspondence with Rob was to be need, you know, the line with the lot line state in the plan.
The interior lot line?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can see the...
It should not have been here. The background on this one is there was a solar project approved here. There was one parcel here, a second parcel here. They had access through this parcel because there's all wetlands within this piece of property. So, even though they had frontage here, they weren't allowed to use it for the actual access because they would have to cross the wetlands. So, they're providing their 170-foot frontage over here because 70 on its own isn't enough. So, that's where they're getting their access. And what they had tried to do was to subdivide this as like a retreat lot and then still continue using the access for their solar through that retreat lot, through some sort of an easement. But I think at the time, it was discussed that that wouldn't necessarily meet the intent of the zoning bylaw because then this property wouldn't have any actual usable frontage because all the frontage was completely covered with wetlands.
Right.
Yeah, and you have to access through your own...
Frontage.
Yes.
Do you know where Kenzie's path is? Yep, so that's like right about here.
So, there's our locust map, right? So, 106 South Street, Franklin Street.
So...
So, now they're trying to make it all one piece?
They have, so they created this map and they recorded it at the registry. So, they consolidated both pieces of property that were pre-paved by River View Solar and now Green Apple Farms LLC.
I'd actually wanna see what the square footage was before because I don't know that with that lot line that this plan actually does that.
Does what?
Does consolidate them. Right? As long as the line exists and they call this out. As opposed to now, informally.
And that's still there, right here, right?
Only physical way of access to the property, yep. Regulations, their legal frontage is provided a distance on that portion.
Okay. So, they got $2,619,000 now.
And 2,400,000. So, can you tell us again, Charlie, what Amy Kessel said to...
Well, the question about the lot line, I mean, if that's gonna be the official plan, but there's a lot line, is the land actually been consolidated or not? What's the...
Right. Because it really didn't happen that way.
Well, yeah, I sense that there were two lots. I don't... I'm not looking at it obvious from here, but my understanding is that they wanna make it one lot. Okay, that's fine. They can... Should be able to do that. The thing is that there's nothing to have a lot line.
Yeah, it's not dashed. It doesn't say old lot line, this...
So, should we ask for clarification on that then?
But I can put the question up, you know, up to Amy and say, you know, what we can do is get a PDF of that from the developer, got the engineer, send it up to Amy and to review, have her review and say, is this...
Am I also right in thinking that consolidation is a strange term to have on the registered plan? Like consolidation, it seems like it would be something more if it was a work in progress. I would expect that on the...
So, I don't know if it's a formal term of trade or not.
Yeah, I've just never seen it.
Right, it describes obviously what's going on, but legally, Amy, is there another term that would be used?
Yeah, I think so.
Merge, for instance?
What was the word?
Merge?
What would you think it would have been when you were doing plans? Do you still do plans?
No, but it wouldn't have ever put or seen consolidation.
What would have happened?
Most likely, it would just be plan of land if that's all it was or...
Well, it's the bigger question I have is why does it even matter? What do we even have to do with this at this point? There's nothing for us to do.
I think we're all just concerned that this gets okay and then they come back in a month with a building.
For a year.
Yeah, with... Exactly. That they come back later on and show that on a plan by itself and try to get permits for it.
But that would be my... Now it's part of this larger lot now.
Except for if they went and it wasn't the same board, somebody might not realize this. You know what I mean?
At least if they don't subdivide it again, I would say that's right.
Or try.
Because it seems like they're trying to make it one big thing to go through, but then they could turn around and re-subdivide and try to do different things.
Well, okay, but then they wouldn't be allowed to because then they would be making their project non-compliant, right? Because they wouldn't have the frontage anymore. So, as soon as they get rid of that access, there's no way to actually get back to that property anymore and I don't think we would sign it.
So, like if we agree to this now, they go in, they do their project, come back a year or two down the line and try to subdivide, then the project's done, right?
The project's done, but we wouldn't allow them to subdivide it because their road would have already been built through that 70-foot area and you're not allowed to share driveways. So, they wouldn't be able to share that driveway with the residential property.
So, on the plan purpose, it doesn't say that the purpose is to combine lot...
No, it does.
To be consolidated to one lot. That's what I'm saying, is to depict assessor's map to be consolidated into one lot. So, to depict it as being consolidated is not the same as combining it, right? In some weird way?
Yeah, because you're saying depict.
If you were just combining it, you would say combining it. You're not depicting a consolidation under common ownership. So, this is saying that they own them both?
But they're calling it one lot. So, whether you call it combining into one lot or consolidation into one lot, I think it's the same.
The depiction of consolidation is fine? Okay.
I don't know.
I'll go with it.
I don't know if this is the right legal...
Show or represent by a drawing. So, they're just trying to show or represent it by a drawing?
Correct.
The consolidation.
Yeah, I think part of the reason is I'm probably just a little skeptical of this project because of the way it came up. So, maybe that's why I'm looking at it in such a...
I would be inclined to have them come in and present what it is that they're doing and tell us what exactly they're trying to achieve and have a surveyor confirm and attest to the fact that this is the proper way to consolidate them into one lot and just walk us through their process. Because right now, I'm not even sure where we should be signing or that we even need to be signing this because it's already been recorded. So...
I want a written determination from the zoning officer because he's already talked to Amy about it and I wanna know what he has to say about it. I think that would be a good idea.
Sure. What would the determination, what would you want to know, anything specific?
What his thoughts are on it as far as how it relates to zoning.
Anything in particular or just generally whether or not this is the right way to do it?
That line being there, I mean, if he's talked to Amy, I want his written determination on what his determination is based on Amy and seeing this. And you know what I mean?
Because...
Because I think it would help us understand what he's looking into. Because if he's talked to Amy about it, right? And he knows that she's questioning that too from what Charlie's saying. Why don't we get a written determination from him so that we can understand and all be on the same page? Because I think that was that whole process that we were talking about with zoning is like making sure everybody is on the same page with written information.
All right, I think I see what you're getting at, but I think we don't want him to make a zoning determination because he's just gonna tell us that's like residential, agricultural or whatnot.
Yeah.
So, I don't think you wanna ask him for a zoning thing. I think you wanna ask him his opinion on if he knows what I mean.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I think.
That's what I was trying to say, I think.
Yeah, not necessarily his zoning determination is just his opinion on the project as a whole.
And my bigger question is what is the whole point of this, right? Combining them into a single lot? Because the project was already approved with them having the two lots and having access through one lot into the other lot. So, this doesn't change anything from my perspective. They're just combining the two lots, yeah.
They might have a bigger plan than...
I'm sure they do, right? Because there's no deuce in just spending money.
But they still have a lot line.
So, what... Because I don't know, what do they wanna do with this? I'm assuming they wanna do solar panels or something similar.
They're approved for a solar panel project with a road coming through that 70-foot portion.
And all these people who live here have already agreed and...
Yeah, so, yeah, so the history being they tried to do a bunch of houses and it just like wasn't gonna work with the length of the road and all the wetlands crossings. So, then they went for the solar panel. That got totally approved. And I believe that what happened was is they proposed a house to a different board over on this lot. And the other board said, you know, hey, can you go back to the planning board? Because we thought that this was all one piece of property to serve the solar farm. So, that's where we came up. So, it seemed like to us that when they came in for the solar field, this piece of property was gonna be used for this access. And then it seemed like they went to someone else and said that they would like to use that piece of property for a house. So...
Which would have... Then they have no access in, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, I think they have to come here and tell us what they wanna do because it's just, I mean, it's only first time in, but that seems... Why? Why would they wanna make it one unless they have another plan that they haven't spoken about to somebody?
And for a lot of this kinda stuff, if you're going the other way, if you had one big piece of property and you want it to cover it up in the smaller ones, if it met the regulations or dimension requirements, they don't even have to tell us why. They can just say, I wanna do it. And it's not some method requirement, so that'd be fine. In this case, I think it'd be good to ask the question, right? Find out what the point of all this is.
I'd like to know what their long-term plan is, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna invite them in and get an opinion from the building inspector in writing?
Yes, and I guess what was the question that we... That Mr. Questle was...
Maybe there's a couple of things. Is the lot... As much... Is there any role for you to play?
Yep.
Any approvals? B, setting aside that, is there any... What's the effect of having this at the registry with the lot line still there? If... Is it actually consolidated lot? Or do they have to take any other action to officially consolidate those? For instance, if there were two owners, is there a deed by one owner selling the second parcel to...
So, they do have that now. So, what they did was they have attached a deed that transfers the ownership from the two LLCs that previously owned the two individual parties to the one single entity.
So, the question... And so, is this... Is that plus this effectively creating one lot? And again, is that sufficient to consolidate? Number three is for the head... Let's just for the heck, let's say that it is consolidated now, even with the line there. What's the effect of... And we go back to the zoning question, a sense of, okay, it's one lot. That's it, period. Is there anything else? I mean, they can talk about their plans, but we all... The only thing that they're gonna approve for is the solar field. Yeah. So, does that... Does this change anything to do with that?
Well, I would think that if it was gonna be consolidated, there couldn't be a lot line between it because that means it's technically not consolidated.
I agree. I mean, what we would have, you know, do we have to send a note to ourselves for a year from now, five years from now, 25 years from now? You know, since leaving the note in the file that says, hey, despite this plan that says that there's a lot line there, there's no lot line there.
Yeah. Well, could it be a deed restriction that would have to be recorded on it?
I don't know if you'd do that necessarily.
Well, you can deed restrict houses that are in DEP area to stay certain bedrooms. So, you could probably deed restrict it to be one lot.
I don't know if you'd do that because they could always carve it up and essentially rescind their approval for the solar farm. And if they wanted to, just put a house there and never build a solar project if they want to pursue an alternate path. And so, I think preventing them from doing or exploring other options down the road may not be a good thing, but...
Maybe if they are gonna start building, they could have a deed restriction. Start building a solar project, they could have a deed restriction.
Or some bother, whatever the mechanism is to prevent them from coming back in the future.
I guess technically on certain projects, if we wanted to make sure that they didn't back down. But I don't think we've ever opposed anything like that in the past. But I know what you're saying, like normally they would do it if you can only get a septic system so large in a piece of property, now you gotta do bedroom deed restriction, something like that. But I don't know that we've ever done it as the planning board.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to think of so that we wouldn't have to like, you know, write a note to ourselves into the future.
But that's how I felt with this project was I thought that that... I never expected anyone to try to get a house there because I thought it was completely understood that that property was to be used for the solar field.
Right.
So, it seems like, again, whether that was intentional or, you know, something that they had thought out all along, I don't know.
I don't know, yeah.
So, if you guys wanna read this. So, this is actually... In the deed that they recorded, they're saying in the actual deed, it does talk about having them one undivided lot into unified ownership formerly consisting of two lots. So, they do talk about it being conveyed from the previous LLC to the Green Acres LLC as a single undivided lot. But to the bigger point, really, what does it even matter? So, anyhow...
Well, there has to be some reason they wanna do it. They wouldn't just do it for no reason.
Right.
Yeah. Registry recording fees just went up.
Exactly. No one thinks, you know, we should make this a really big lot and pay the taxes halfway for no reason.
Yeah, you're kinda going the other way a lot of times to prepare for it. Maybe they save a little bit of money if it's one larger lot instead of individual buildable lots. I don't know. So, we're gonna ask them to come in to walk us through their thought process. And then I guess the question is, Charlie, just to confirm, is it Attorney Questle that would be providing the answers to some of these questions about... Okay. Whether or not there's a need for the planning board to actually act on this in any capacity because it's already been recorded at the registry without our signature. They've recorded the deeds without us acting on it. And does this action that they took effectively create the single lot? And then I guess the other step would be then with the... Uh, and then I guess the other step would be then with the, uh, the assessor that also need to acknowledge that. And combine the lots into a single parcel with a single address.
Yeah, but after the meets and bounds on that, it does say it's to consolidate one parcel, it calls out the ninety-three A. To be combined with the fifty-five acres.
Yep, so there's a couple things, so even if it does meet all the criteria and it does effectively create the single lot.
What are we doing?
Do we even need to do anything?
Yeah.
Cause this might even be getting to that whole part of that eighty-one X plan discussion that we had the other day. Where the registry can do things without necessarily having the planning board take formal action on it, maybe this falls into that category.
Well, I thought that the selectmen in the town still had to be involved in the eighty-one X.
I remember the nuances of it, but I know there was some element of it that didn't require our action. Uh, and I think as long as it met the legal definition of some other criteria, then they can just go direct to the registry.
Yeah.
So maybe this does fall there, maybe it does need some sort of other town action, even if it's not us.
Like saying the registry didn't think that needed approval or approval not required, and didn't think that he needed that. And that's something that they would've looked for.
Well, probably because from their point of view, adjoining two lots, what do they care? They probably don't know about the solar project, they probably don't know about anything else.
But generally speaking, if it was gonna be an approval not required plan, they wouldn't stamp it and record it unless they saw our signatures on it. So typically, we would have to sign it before they take it to the registry, otherwise they wouldn't record it.
Yeah, that's weird.
Okay.
So it's a little funky, so that's why I'm wondering, why not do the same thing for us even too on this one? So, uh, and then also, do we wanna ask, the, what do we wanna ask the building inspector?
For his opinion on it.
In any particular capacity or just?
In writing, oh, I mean, in it, like, what do you thinks of this with that, with the lot line still on it, but it's supposed to be consolidated? I don't know how that's, to me, I don't know how that's one lot with a lot line.
I don't know, so this, again, they're saying they recorded a bunch of stuff at the registry, uh, they filed this plan, registry recorded it, they transferred it as a single lot. I don't know, who knows if that qualifies, uh, and I don't know if we're gonna get much of an answer from the building inspector, but we can ask him the question.
Well, I just know, my thought process came because he had talked to Amy.
Okay. Anything else? Alright. Uh, I think that basically covers everything and. So Mark and I already signed one of them.
So the meeting minutes like going over now, at the end of every meeting. Uh, secretary is not yet tonight, like she usually writes everything up and then we read through, and then that becomes like the formal. What happens at the meeting, so we agree, everyone reads it and signs off on it. So if there's anything that you think that happened during the meeting that doesn't reflect well in the notes or something like that, or if you want something stricken.
Um, I would like that any part of the hearing. Be, uh, verbatim and not, um, overviewed. Because there's, um. Some different, I've been, I've been typing up September fifth, word for word for what was said, so that it would be followed correctly. Because some of this is summation and putting, um. Certain feelings of other people into it, like for instance here, Troop doesn't feel it's necessary to get further opinion from town council. I did for myself, but I wasn't pro- trying to press it upon anybody, and I even later even said, no, that I, I supported. Other people getting town council, but it makes me look like I was like trying to be. A certain way that I was not trying to be, so I like, I would like it to be verbatim for hearings, I'm gonna ask her to do that.
Okay.
For any part of the hearings, like I want it to be verbatim, like type it out just as it said.
For everything?
For the hearings, for a, for a hearing. So that it's not missing any information.
Okay.
Without like a, a direction of opinion, cause like sometimes the way it's written, it's direction of opinion.
How would you have Joanne do that? I don't know if you need to go through necessarily and type that.
Well, I was trying to help her, cause I knew she was trying to do a whole bunch of work, but I just don't have time, cause I have a full-time job, so.
Okay. Charlie, does anybody have any of that voice recognition software that we could use to? Have that assist in the whole effort there, because I imagine that would be a nightmare to try and.
Well, yeah, I mean. But we'd have to buy some to use against the tape essence or whatever to, you know, whether it's that tape or this, if there's a tape here. At the table, we have to use that.
But we do not currently have one, right? The challenge there would be changing and assigning who said what to the voices that are on the.
Well, that might, as, you know, if we've got the video, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Meaning you've got multiple people talking at the same time, it gets a little bit difficult.
Yeah, well, that's the whole thing, I'm going back and forth and typing and I'm very good avid typer, but then I'm like. Wait a minute, wait a minute, and you're going back and you're trying to, yeah.
Yeah, I will say though, on a three-hour meeting though, do you really want?
Well, I just think that it, it helps setuate things for the future on what actually did ha- happen and occur.
My issue with the verbatim thing is, I don't speak the way I would write. If I was writing something or a speech or to someone, i- it would be totally different than a casual conversation. So like, I have all of these open-ended questions that I propose to people, that I don't actually, I say half the question. It's implied and then someone replies, but if you read that in text, you'd be like, oh, gosh, retarded, like, you know what I mean? Because I'm talking normally and people pick up on certain things, whether it's, you know, sarcasm, or you can sometimes lead someone in a conversation. So when you see it verbatim, it doesn't always look good, like, I have that issue where like sometimes.
I can see your point exactly, but there's also some things that are being not actually communicated clearly due to the fact that not everything's put in.
That's why, would you be okay with approaching those on like an individual basis? Like, I have no problem with you being like, hey, I don't like the way this came out, because that happens all the time. So like, I would have no problem with you being like, I, you know, I don't like the way this was worded, or I don't think this reflects, like, I would have, I have no problem like, like. Approving those changes, I just think if we did the whole thing verbatim, you'd find that it's like kinda worse.
I think it would be harder to follow, right, because then you have to think a lot more about the conversation and what it's going, I remember seeing one of those. And there's a lot of times where somebody's saying, okay, and then Mr. Millius says, okay. And it just turns into a very long thing.
I can understand that, but there's some things that are just misportraying what actually.
So we do have the opportunity through what we're doing now to review and make edits and propose corrections if we feel like there's misrepresentation. So I'm kinda in the same boat that I think having a summary, a three or four-page summary of the discussion points is. Uh, easier to follow, uh, maybe, maybe not as precise as the conversation that was had.
And we always have the chance that we all get to individually read it, cause we're all gonna come up with a different opinion, just like anything in text. We'll all get a different feel from it, so if we get a feeling from it that we don't like, we can still, still change it, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, wow.
A- and like, I'm, I'm always.
I just mean, I, I just mean for hearings in general, like.
But that's, alright, so the hearings I think are the worst ones, cause that's like the most amount of dialogue too. You know what I mean, three or four hours of, like, there's a lot of like repetitive stuff that goes on, a lot of the same question gets asked.
But I, I think it gets the point across though of what actually happens to dictate, so that the town, when they do read it, understands. What's coming up on a regular basis and why certain things came, instead of a summation based on who's writing it.
Yeah, but don't you agree that like, that we make sure of that, like, we don't sign these?
A little, sometimes it's just a lot, but I would like, I would like it, the hearings to me, verbatim.
A- and I get the value of if somebody's representing something, if they're presenting it and they say certain things, I understand the value of the direct quote. On a lot of that stuff also, I think it makes it harder to review and approve them also, right? So now, if we're saying verbatim, you know, we have to go back and check the actual videotape, cause we're not gonna remember the exact words. That we used when we spoke those words, right? Uh. I don't know.
You know, sort of a, I'm kinda just trying to look out for like the whole picture of it, cause I think that some things are just completely missing. And other things, to me, I feel like are being slighted in the way that I'm being portrayed and asking and caring about what I have to say. Like, for instance, what I just read out loud to you, cause it wasn't exactly what I meant, like. When I said, I, I was okay with attorney privilege, they're making it look like I didn't want it for anyone, and I was just saying I was okay with it. Let's go forward, but then. It wasn't like I'm trying to say, like, nobody else can, but that's what it looks like, from an outsider's point of view, can you see what I'm saying?
That, that's a tough one, cause like I said, everybody, you know, you read any, any amount of text, y- y- you, you get a. Uh, you know what I mean, when I used to one, when anyone seldom sends you a text, it's always your mood of how you read it, it could be joking, and if you're mad, you don't read it like a joke. Or place versa.
See, alright, so, well, it shouldn't say doesn't feel, cause they don't know how I feel, I said that I didn't, I didn't think it was necessary to have further town council. Opinion from town council, they can't say what I feel, I think this is where I'm at on that one, cause it's like. They're making it like seem like, well, I don't feel.
But they, they phrase it saying.
But that way you can totally address that, and I think we're all cool with that, like, if you were like, hey, I don't like this, this tries to portray my feelings. We're all gonna agree to your change, you know what I'm saying?
Dates, whatever it is that you stated, it's more of a fact as opposed to, like you said, projecting feelings or intent. Onto somebody's statement.
Yeah, like I said. I'd go with that change every, every time, so.
Cause I had a hard time actually reading one of the ones that was the verbatim ones, cause we did one or two of these verbatim.
Mm-hmm.
And I, it was making my head hurt, cause there were so many spelling mistakes and so many punctuation issues, and all of a sudden, if we're going down verbatim. And to Mark's point, we're saying certain things, even if it's loose grammar in English when we're speaking. When it's on paper, it becomes problematic.
Because if, if we were doing everything on paper, everything would just be like solid statements, no open-ended questions. I say things like like and what do you mean, like, that doesn't really help, but in a conversation, it keeps the conversation going, but like, I don't really wanna write, Mr. Millius. Said, what do you mean, like?
So when do we see these, like the hearing ones that she's fixing right now, or?
They usually take a couple weeks after the meeting for her to actually print them up.
And then everybody gets one, and then everybody gets the proposed changes to it, and then you get them again, what everyone changes, is that how it works?
So we used to get them ahead of time, right, so when Terry was here, she used to email them out prior to the meeting, so you'd be able to look at them, so you. If you have, if you don't have a town email address, they'll give you one if they haven't already, uh, we all have one, I don't even know how to access the account. But.
I don't really have anything yet, Gordon said he was gonna try to get me stuff, but.
Okay, so then we'll get the information, we'll get agendas, we'll get that information via email ahead of time to date before typically. Uh, Joanne will ask for attendance, who's coming, who can come, if there's a conflict. Uh, it would be good to have these ahead of time, I know we used to get them in Word format also.
Right.
So a lot of times it's easier just to correct them fly there than it is to handwrite changes, and that way you can track the changes. We would all submit our changes either at the hearing or via email ahead of time, uh, and then hopefully by the time it's time to vote. People that were there for that hearing vote on it, so in this case, the minutes from this meeting, Gordon won't vote on it because he wasn't here. Uh, so we just have to have three of the people that were here present to vote on it. I would like to see, maybe we could ask Joanne to distribute a copy of the, the minutes in Word ahead of time, so we can kinda streamline the process a little bit. Cause I agree, sitting here at the hearing and everybody taking half an hour to read through it is kinda wasting everybody's time to some degree.
Yeah, especially if we get three or four at a time.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we don't hold up.
Do you wanna go through mail?
Um, I am. I'll give.
I've got five more minutes.
And I think that's just general mail, right, as opposed to mail direct for us?
Um, I, yeah, pretty, well, there is a pasture lane.
Oh, really?
It says mails, emails, notices from town departments, pasture lane, found few estates, attorney mail updates.
Alright, and what do we have?
Oh, those are in a folder too, I believe.
That's the we had.
Yeah.
Regarding region out to Larry Mayo, so now we're talking about pasture lane. And, um, so that is one lot was held instead of having a bond on the road. And then the developer sold it, and it's still not being completed in the, um. It's over off of, um, Hudson.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, the neighborhood's been in here and they've been asking us to do something about it, and we've been diligently trying to figure it out. So Larry Mayo is regular town council, and he said, hello, members of the planning board, regarding reaching out to Larry Mayo. Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne wrote this email, hello, members regarding reaching out to Larry Mayo. About pasture lane is discussed at January sixteenth, twenty-twenty planning board meeting, see correspondence below from Charlie to Larry. So, um. Charlie said, hold on.
And for record, this is, this.
Charlie, hold on.
Like ten plus years ago, so he said on a number of occasions, oh, I'm about to do it, I'll come in, I'm gonna fix it, I'm about to do it. And then he actually sold a lot to somebody else, so the way the town used to do it, so now you can put the bond, so if you're building a road. So that if you don't finish the road and you skip town, how the town could collect on the bond, and essentially finish the road themselves. And they, and back in the day, we used to just hold a lot, uh, under the premise that the developer would want to ultimately develop that lot, he can't get a building permit. Until he clears the covenant on that lot, in this case, nobody ever built anything on that house or on that lot, so never really came to a head. Now he sold the lot to somebody else, uh, which he probably shouldn't have been able to, uh, and that person wants to build a house, but they can't. Until they finish the road, but the road costs more than the lot is worth.
I think when I was here for my interview, he was here talking to you guys.
So he's not interested in fixing the road, because it's, he's gonna lose money on that, uh, so now it's just kind of a bit of a stalemate. So the town discussed potentially just finishing the road. I would say on his behalf of doing the work to finish the road.
Almost the same situation.
Do you know what I'm talking about, okay? Apparently we have a lot of subdivisions that are having a hard time being built, that's what I'm seeing.
Or just that last house. Two old ones were kicking around and somebody else bought them, but figures.
Yeah, so the correspondence was, uh, town council sent, Larry Mayo sent him a letter saying, you are required. Even though you sold the house, you're still required, or sold the lot, you're still required to finish the road as part of your original. Permit with the city or with the town, uh, and it's just, we've been sending him letters, which is all we've done so far. So trying to figure out a way to help the people living on that street.
So Charlie wrote on one seventeen to Larry, Larry Mayo, hi folks, I'm probably going over, hold on, this is confusing, how this.
Yeah, they go backwards, so stop there.
Okay, well, C two, under Charlie's name, it says Larry, so it's confusing to me, alright, so this is from Charlie. Going to, alright, I'm probably going over old material due to the conversation during last night's planning board meeting. This included how the remaining lot was sold, given the covenant of the town has for subdivision. This covenant would not show up on a municipal lien certificate unlike any back taxes. As far as I know, the town has for these subdivisions, never filed anything with the registry of deeds. It has simply been in the town's records that lot X cannot be developed, receiving a building permit until the roadwork is completed. Or the town has received a bond charity money to cover the road's cost. And then Larry answers on, a couple hours later, um, Charlie, there should be a Form F covenant. Um, Charlie, there should be a Form F government on record at the registry of deeds pertaining to the subdivision. And its prohibition on conveyance or sale until installation of infrastructure is complete. I did not see it or any other records docs in the file I reviewed at the. Planning board office. At some point, I may have to do some registry title work if Goodman or his successor does not perform. But I did not need to do the registry work to commence my work and in any case, I would not issue a building permit for the lot to anyone. Wow, it seems like we should have put something at the registry of deeds on the lots.
A lot of times we ask the developers to do all that stuff, uh, and then just show us evidence that they did it. I don't think the town really records things all that often, so.
Is this new owner trying to go after, pressing to sell it to them?
They know each other and he essentially, he got the lot for a, a good price, I don't recall exactly what it was. But it was pretty much less. Cause he was gonna build the road, so that the original developer just kinda parted ways with the lot. He thought he parted ways with his commitment to finish the road and then pushed that payment out to the new owner. That's not really the case, even though the new owner was gonna finish the road and effectively would have taken care of it. Uh, but I think it cost like a hundred fifty thousand bucks to finish the road and the lot's worth less than that, so, yeah, it's a bit of a stalemate, so.
Is there any paperwork from them, like when they closed on the property that had any writing of the new person taking over the road or anything like that?
I know, I think they just transferred like a traditional title deed that transferred from one to the other.
It was just a quick claim deed and it was probably cash, there was no mortgage, there was no research done on the title or anything, it was.
Here you go.
That's thanks for him.
So, but the original developer's still on the hook, uh, so attorney Mayo sent him a letter, saying you're still on the hook, you have until February, it's sometime this week, right? I think it's later this week or the sixteenth, something like that, where he has up until then to do something.
Right.
Otherwise we'll take.
What are his options? What, what can he do?
Uh, he can finish the road, uh, he could let the town build the road, I believe, uh, which is what was in attorney Mayo's letter. And then we would bill him for the work and he would then owe us that money. If he did not pay it, then we would have to sue him to collect for it. Uh, I think another option was that the current owner would essentially deed the parcel, uh, for zero dollars to the town. Uh, and then the town would build the road and eventually sell the lot and keep the proceeds from selling the lot. I think that was something that was being discussed with the current owner that Gordon was, uh, talking about. Uh, I don't know, was there any other potential avenues it could go?
I think you nailed it.
Yes, I think that's, that's where we're at. Uh, I don't know really if the town has the appetite to build the road or what it's gonna take. Uh, I think the discussion was that it does need a town vote in some capacity. If we were to take on that liability of building the road and then pursuing legal action.
Yes, I forgot about that part.
Yeah, so come the end of February, if he doesn't respond, I think we'll invite the, uh, people that live on the street back in. We'll discuss what we recommend as a possible next step. And then maybe it gets on the town meeting for next town meeting to have the town spend the money to do the work. As a safety issue for the people that live on that street, uh, and then we'd have to sue the, uh, previous developer. Stuff.
Sounds fun.
Fun way to that, get that road built. It is a mess of a road. Have you been down there lately? There's cones everywhere, it's falling apart.
We did a tour and we saw it and it's sad because she's still trying to sell that house.
Yep. Oh, and that's not even the, that's a different person, right?
Yeah, it's one of the original houses.
Tina's selling it for the neighbor and she lives on the street.
Yeah, cause I, yeah, cause I know the, the lady who comes in and we've talked to her last time is not the first resident to come in.
Yeah, it's been happening.
Alright, um, I'm going to excuse myself.
Have a good night, Mark.
Sure, I'm leaving it in capable hands.
Yep.
Well done, everyone.
I think we're just going over mail at this point.
Alright.
Um, so this one is about Santander and how they're trying to get Santander to do. A site plan review application for their ATM. So that's without it, and, um.
Just internal deliberation, they're thinking about doing it or?
They started and I think, um, Rob saw them start it and.
Oh, they started building an ATM?
Yes, and then.
What it is, is there's an ATM there.
Yep.
Re- doing a new, replacing with a new ATM, but also with a bar.
They're changing it.
To stop traffic.
A height bar to make sure they don't hit the roof?
No, I don't think.
Like, kinda like a railroad crossing.
Yeah, okay, they should come in and that's, is that what the letter says? You need to come in to site plan review? Okay.
And then, um. This one is from Terry to Ashlesh Karhate. And, um, she's like, um, Terry's letting him know that she's not the secretary anymore to contact Joanne. And, um, the next meeting is February sixth and it starts at six thirty and the deadline is Monday the third to be on it. And it's, I'm sorry, it's about, um. An assistant project manager trying to get on our agenda, but it doesn't really. Oh, a solar field project for two forty-one Franklin Street. So I think they might have put it on. So that must be in relevance to two forty-one, um, plan, so maybe.
Yep. Okay, so they just didn't get it submitted and take it on the agenda, so.
Yeah, but I bet they put it on just in case, so that would be that.
Okay.
Um, notice of a public hearing was received on the twenty-seventh. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty at seven fifteen. In the great hall of the town hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street Halifax, on the application by David A. Rota Scroll Contracting. Company to build an addition for an in-law apartment located at two ninety-two Thompson Street, so. Should I continue reading the whole thing or we get the point? The next hearing one is again on ten twenty twenty and it's to do with. Um, a special permit for interior renovations located at two seventy-five Home Street. And the next one is town of Halifax Board of Selectmen, notice of a public hearing. The pu- Board of Selectmen will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty at seven forty-five in the Selectmen's meeting room. Um, application from Inseason Restaurant Inc., DBA Lakeside Villa. George Latini manager to alter the premises under its all alcoholic beverage commish, common victual license. I guess I was at a Selectmen's meeting, we were there too, right? Oh, so we all, we're all on the same page on that.
But for your background, so I think they have a liquor license, I think it spans the town line, is that what happens? Something like that, and they have a liquor license for half of the restaurant, so there's a line that's painted in the restaurant or some sort of delineation. Where they're not allowed to cross from one side into the other, so I think they're just trying to get a liquor license to eliminate that situation.
Um, there is a wage and personnel, um, meeting. On February twenty-first, twelve thirty to two thirty PM in the Selectmen's meeting room, um. It's about wage increases. And they just have different people they're meeting. Want me to pass this around?
I'm here with, all, all that stuff should be posted, all the public notices downstairs too, behind that glass when you walk in, I think. Yeah, all just other town relevant information.
Yeah, this one's for Pembroke. And it's, um, premises at one seventy Old Washington Street in Pembroke.
So I think what they do is they send us all the public hearings for the towns that directly abut Halifax, uh, just so we know what's going on in the periphery.
They're converting a full basement into an, um, in-law apartment.
So I hate to cut in, is there any way that we could, uh, possibly wrap this up?
Sure. I just wanted to make sure, and then the old colony thing's still in here, um, it's again in here, we've received it February third. About there.
Good, oh, and then, and then one other thing I probably should mention is the, uh, the other email that we got from. Charlie about the new committee for the building and the facility needs, uh. Are you guys thinking about getting on it or anybody from the planning board thinking about that?
I'm pretty tapped for time at this point, so I'm not gonna go for more.
I hear you, I think I'm in the same boat, uh, so the background.
They talked about it at the Selectmen meeting, they wanted the heads, right? Isn't that what they were saying?
Or anybody, I think, from the various boards. I think they wanted diverse bunch of people to be represented there.
It's for, what this project they're trying to do, is that what it's for, for all of?
Yeah, that complex.
Yeah, the campus project. Yeah, so that would be quite the, uh, undertaking. They must be trying to get land off of Carver Street. That is either not behind on taxes or abandoned either one. And then using that to get through the back into the old central school where the police station is. And then coming in by the blacksmith shop into that whole area.
I think it's a good idea, but, uh, yeah, I don't have time to.
Okay, no, no.
Participate in that, but.
Just make sure, we tapped on it, okay?
Alright, so we'll now make Mark then to do that, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Holes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.